Good evening. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. I'd like to ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander will be absent and Mayor McGarvey.
Here. Thank you. Ask the city clerk to announce the meeting, video recording, and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, August 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 10th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Ken Thurman, the former Purple Heart Commander, and then the invocation will be Kathrina Higashi from Osama Christian Ministries to give the invocation. I'd like to invite everyone to remain standing. Please do me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm reading from Psalm 24. "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it. The world and honest people belongs to him, for he laid the earth foundation on the seed and built it on the ocean depth. Who may climb the mountain of the Lord? Who may stand in his holy place? Only those whose hands and hearts are pure, who do not worship idols and never tell lies. They will receive the Lord's blessing and have a right relationship with God their Savior. Such people may seek you and worship in your presence, O God of Rancho Cordova. Open up ancient gates, open up ancient doors, let the King of glory enter." Who is the King of glory? The Lord strong and mighty, the Lord invincible in battle. "Open up ancient gates, open up ancient doors, let the King of glory enter." Who is this King of glory? The Lord of heaven's army. He is the King of glory. Father God, we come in the name of Jesus. We first of all thank you for our wonderful country and our state and our city Rancho Cordova. We ask you to bless our President Donald Trump, our Vice President Mike Pence, and California Governor Gavin Newsom, and our Mayor Robert McGarvey, Vice Mayor David Sander, council members Garrett Gatewood, Donald Terry, Linda Budge. May your wisdom be upon them, may your hand and your blessing be upon them, that they will rule their country, their state, and their city by your wisdom and by your love. We thank you for your blessing over our police department, fire department, public services, and school. May your divine protection be over all the service people. In God and Jesus' name, we pray for your business to prosper in this city. We pray a blessing over all our families and marriages and children and all the citizens of Rancho Cordova. God, we pray for the crime rate to go down in this city. And God, we pray that your blessing is upon this city. And we thank you, God, that your angels are released upon this city to protect all the citizens and all the people, that this is a holy and a peaceful country and a peaceful city. And Lord, we thank you for your council meeting tonight. We thank you for all the agenda that may go well according to your will. And Lord, we pray a special blessing over our mayor. Happy birthday to Mayor McGarvey. May he be blessed with your health and happiness, special blessing over his family and his marriage. We love you, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. We're going to have a little bit of a change in our presentation. Mr. Bob Burns will be postponed and will be back in the future when everything works out. Next, we're going to invite Ken Thurman to move forward and share some words with us regarding the presentation of the Purple Heart Community and recognize the city of Rancho Cordova as a Purple Heart City.
Thank you, member and mayor. My name, as the mayor said, is Ken Thurman, former chapter commander of Chapter 385, which covers a seven-county area, including Sacramento. The Purple Heart Community Program is part of what's called the Purple Heart Trail, which starts at Mount Vernon, George Washington's home, and as you'll hear in the proclamation, that's for the reason because he initially started what has become the Purple Heart Award. It's up to the local boots on the ground, as they say, to select communities, if any, in their area that are deserving of the honor of becoming a Purple Heart community. Certainly Rancho Cordova qualifies. And want to list off some of the reasons why we selected this particular community to so honor. Starting with the obvious, the Mather VA Medical Center, in particular, the volunteer services. Obviously, there's a lot of employees and veterans there, as well as voters. The Mather Veterans Village, the Veterans Memorial Plaza, which I personally have had the honor of placing three bricks in. All those are truly an example of turning swords into plowshares because all this was devoted to military and back in the Cold Wars destroying who knows how many people. And now you look around at what it has become today, and it is actually helping veterans in very positive, progressive area and city, which, by the way, I noticed the new banner over your entrance. Congratulations once again. The Rancho Cordova Library is extremely active in helping veterans through their Veterans Connect Program, Veterans Resource Station, and Veterans Voices for Women. The Folsom Lake College Veterans Success Annex helps many of the younger veterans. The Sacramento Permanent Veterans Standout was located here. They've had to relocate, but they are still a resource that helps folks here in this area in many ways. The Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 500, is extremely active and helpful in this area. American Legion Post 709 also is domiciled here and extremely active in helping veterans in the community. Motel 6 is quite generous in helping house, on at least a temporary basis, veterans and their families in need, which I think is very commendable for a commercial organization. And then the recently established Center for Post Traumatic Growth chose Rancho Cordova to locate. They help with post-traumatic stress with an emphasis on female veterans and some of the things they've had to endure, unlike historically with the men. Also, special events that you folks have sponsored and continue to, starting with the Purple Heart Truck last year, which the mayor gave us a proclamation and in turn, we gave the sign, which has now got almost the primo parking spot right in front of City Hall. We appreciate that. It really helps because many of the combat wounded need to cover as short a distance as possible, but it's quite an honor to see that. Thank you. The Mather Air Force Base 100th Anniversary was quite an event honoring both the institution, the facility, and the thousands of veterans that passed through here, and many of them retired in this area. The Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day was another thing that this community sponsored. And of course, the annual memorial and Veterans Day ceremonies over at the Mather Memorial, which you guys sponsor and is much appreciated by all of us. So with that, I'd like to first have all the veterans and the people associated with these organizations behind me stand up and be recognized. Yeah, and I've been reminded, I should add in, because she's such a central part, the Volunteers of America and the Veterans Health to get over right here in Mather. So I would be remiss without recognizing them.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you all the veterans who are here. This is the proclamation, given in recognition of Purple Heart veterans and to recognize the city of Rancho Cordova as a Purple Heart City, August 5th, 2019. And I think I'll just read the whereas. The city of Rancho Cordova has always supported its military veteran population, and whereas a Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created by the badge of military by General George Washington in 1782. Whereas a Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to all who serve and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the initial price, the ultimate price, in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. Whereas the city of Rancho Cordova was home to the former Mather Air Force Base and the thousands who served here, and the city is still home to over 5,000 veterans and their families. Whereas the city of Rancho Cordova was a partner in the creation of his home too, Mather Veterans Village, new permanent supportive and transitional housing for 150-plus homeless and disabled veterans and their families. And over the course of the veterans' lifecycle, Mather Veterans Village will be home to over 10,000 homeless and disabled veterans. And whereas the city of Rancho Cordova appreciates sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support that they earned. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim the city of Rancho Cordova as a Purple Heart City and to encourage the citizens of the city of Rancho Cordova to show their appreciation for the sacrifices of the Purple Heart recipients who made in defending our freedom to acknowledge their courage and show them the honor and support that they earned. Witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused a seal for the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 5th day of August, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get all the veterans and the key people to come up and get in this picture too?
Can we get in the middle here?
Okay, sure.
Counsel, can we get you with a photo too?
Hang on to the part.
You don't bite.
You're taller people in the back. Okay. You're not done yet. As part of this process, Sheri here is our, excuse me, Vicki.
Okay. Vicki is one of our auxiliary officers, and she's going to present the mayor and in turn, the city with something special that we hope is the first of a number of.
We hope to see a number of these at the entryways to Rancho Cordova.
for us, and that was also another honor for us to have in our city of Rancho Cordova. I'm going to call on the next presentation, call on Wendy Lee to Pro Youth and Families. Familiar face, we've seen each other somewhere.
Yeah, so many times.
I know it doesn't compare with all-American city, but this is exactly one of the reasons.
Well, good evening, members of the council. I'm Wendy Lee, the program manager for Pro Youth and Families, and I had the wonderful
Oh, it does, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
pleasure of being the primary facilitator for the Youth at City Council program and
Thank you. Oh, yes. They earned it too. You're not sure. Yeah.
Summer at City Hall program for the past two years.
Since we have one at City Hall, we think the police department needs one.
To give a brief background about Pro Youth and Families, this organization has been in the community for 38 years, and we are affiliated and is in 30 schools in the Sacramento region. Our goal is to really serve the community and keep youth off the streets by inspiring, educating, and empowering our youth to be agents of change through various after-school programs. And we've had a wonderful partnership with the city of Rancho Cordova for the past three years to run civic education programs that are designed to engage with Rancho Cordova youth to foster their leadership and civic engagement. I'll be doing a brief overview of all the wonderful things that they've done in the past year, but the highlight of this presentation is really the students' reflection. So starting off with the Spring Youth at City Council program, we've had 20 students who have gone through the program from beginning to end. We meet on Mondays from January, or starting January, all the way until early June. And the first three months is really learning about the city itself and honing in on their leadership skills through listening to guest speakers and engaging in activities around leadership styles, communication, and more. And we are so thankful to have Mayor McGarvey and Councilmember Budge come and give a presentation on the history of Rancho Cordova. We've also had local leaders from various organizational sectors come and talk about the public, private, and nonprofit sector and how it comes together to really advocate and/or serve their community. It's also an opportunity for students to do a little bit of networking and also career exploration as well. And towards the later half of the year, we have students churning in their passion into action through the creation of mock ordinances. And this year, we've had students researching and creating mock ordinances around expanded policy on mental health screenings for city staff, the creation of a youth council to promote more youth input in city affairs. And they've also done an informational presentation on the pros of lowering the municipal voting age. And to top it off, they've also put a mock city council meeting towards the end of the program. And we've had the mock mayor, who's about to talk a little bit about her experience, about her program with her experience with the Summer at City Hall program last year, but she also came back during the springtime for the Youth at City Council program. So I will have Haley Bowen go ahead and come up and share some of her experiences with you all.
Good evening, city council. My name is Haley Bowen, and this year I'm going to be a junior at Cordova High. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for 16 years, my entire life basically, and I have done multiple things around the city, like participated in Kids' Day at the Park and done, I now work with CRPD, and I've done multiple things around the city, and there's nothing like Youth at City Council and Summer at City Hall that I've been through that has really changed me and helped me mature into the person that I am today. I used to be a really shy little freshman, and then Wendy came by and was introducing all of us to Youth at City Hall and just all this other stuff, all opportunities for teenagers to get out there and try new things and see who they are and make their mark. And I got my hands on things, and I got to learn about things I never thought I would be interested in, like civic engagement and just the government and how things work around here, and it's really opened my eyes to see what I could do in the future. And it's such an awesome opportunity to have these things in Rancho Cordova because it really does help. Even if we don't have as much participation as we want, the more and more we have it out there, the more people are going to want to do it, and I've seen that. I've got to see more and more people from Summer at City Hall. I got to see more come to Youth at City Council. So it's been a great experience, and I think opening this up to more places and really opening it up to cities around us will definitely encourage a lot of growth in teens. So, thank you.
And then next, we also have our Summer at City Hall program that recently ended, and Summer at City Hall is really broken down to three components. The week-long professional development training to prepare 15 students for their internship with the city, the morning summer seminars, and the afternoon internship piece. We've had 15 amazing interns this summer who completed 36 hours of experience, and they've worked alongside with their supervisor to better understand the roles and duties of local government, and they've also gained experience that will greatly benefit their goals and aspirations in the future. And so, much like the sister program, the first two weeks are really dedicated to learning about the city of Rancho Cordova through a series of field trips, presentations on the history of Rancho Cordova, and hearing from local leaders from their respective sectors. It seems like a blur, but we had our end-of-the-year presentation on youth input and art in public places last Friday, and they spent about the last two weeks of July really brainstorming, preparing, and planning, and researching the summer action project. And they were able to collect a lot of data, and we are very happy and excited to share that with the city moving forward, but I also do have to share their accomplishment of theirs. Within 72 hours, they were able to receive 144 responses in regards to where they would like to see public art in Rancho Cordova and what kind of art they would like to see in Rancho Cordova. I would love to give a major thank you to Mayor McGarvey, Councilmember Budge, and City Manager Apar for coming in to hear the students speak last Friday. And I also have Alexander Vang, who is with me as well, who would like to share some of his Summer at City Hall experience.
All right. Good evening. My name is Alexander Vang, and I go to Cordova High. I'm going to be a senior. I am here tonight to share my experience about what I learned during my time at the Summer at City Hall program. I, like most of my peers in this internship, had little or no work experience before starting the program. So you can imagine how it must have been to arrive to the interview with four people ready to ask you questions about why you are the best candidate for this internship. I can honestly tell all of you that I have never been more nervous, but that experience has taught me to always be prepared. I've learned many things these last four weeks while interning in the Public Works Department, but these four stand out most. The point, number one, or one, the importance of dressing professional and arriving to work on time. This is simple but very important to prospective employers. Two, a project takes years of planning before the construction phase begins. For our instance, the Zepfando Bridge took six years before entering the construction phase. Three, communication is key to every project. It can be the deciding factor on whether or not the project meets its deadline. And last but not least, four, not everyone is a natural at public speaking, but with practice, and if you're prepared, you can be just as good. My experience in the program and with the city staff has been fun and positive, but I only wish that it could have been longer. Now, I want to thank the Pro Youth Organization and the city for giving me the opportunity to be part of this amazing program. And I also want to thank all the supervisors, especially Edgar, who took the time out of their busy schedule to mentor an intern like me. Thank you.
I've had the pleasure of working with Alexander for the past five weeks, and he definitely was more on the shyer side, and so I definitely kept pushing him and pushing him to take an opportunity like this to really practice those public speaking skills, and I'm so proud that he was able to come up and talk tonight. So very quickly, I really wanted to share some of the data with you all that we've gathered from our pre- and post-program surveys. On average across the board from both programs, over 80% of our participants have improved their civic efficacy, feel empowered to contribute positive change in their community, and reported that they now participate in service projects in their neighborhood. We've had students ranging from 13- to 18-year-olds participating in this program, and we also have about nine different schools being represented in both programs. So there's a wide diversity in terms of our students and who we are catching, and I would like to emphasize that it is my priority that for every student that walks through city hall's doors and into our programs, they walk out more in tune with themselves, recognize the value of their input and capabilities as youth leaders, and understand that every lesson that we teach daily and weekly are transferable life skills that they can take with them wherever they go. I do want to give a very special thank you and appreciation to Daniel Leonardi and Stacy Delaney and the various wonderful staff, city staff, that have participated in our interview panels, our guest speaker panels, projects, and even becoming supervisors for our internship program. Really, the two programs could not exist or be as successful as it is without the wonderful and strong support with our city staff. So thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity, and we look forward to working with the city moving forward.
Really, thank you.
So I have a question. Don't go away. Yeah. So I was incredibly impressed with the graduation Friday night. I always love coming to talk to the kids about the history of Rancho Cordova, but the research, the attention to process and detail that they used in developing that report on arts in public places was absolutely exemplary. I wrote down every word of it. But I wonder, on the project to investigate the creation of a youth council, did they flesh out goals and aspirations and duties for a youth council with the same attention to detail?
I believe so. I believe not only did they create a presentation around the idea of it, but I also believe they also created an actual outlined ordinance idea of the creation of a youth council, and that's something that I would be more than happy to share.
We'd love to see that. Absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to make, first off, thank you very much. It's amazing how much this has grown in the last few years, but what's really exciting is to go back to my first year or two on council where we were trying to do a Youth at City Hall program, and a lot of folks that are now retired or not with the city essentially told me that, you know, we've tried that, it didn't work.
and even becoming supervisors for our internship program. Really, the two programs could not exist or be as successful as it is without the wonderful and strong support with our city staff. So thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity, and we look forward to working with the city moving forward.
Really, thank you.
So I have a question. Don't go away. Yeah. So, um, I was incredibly impressed, uh, with the, the graduation Friday night. Um, I lo, I always love coming to talk to the kids about the history of Rancho Cordova. But, um, the, the research, the, the attention to process and detail that they used in developing that report on arts in public places was absolutely exemplary. I wrote down every word of it. Um, but I wonder, on the, the project, uh, to, um, investigate the creation of a youth council, did they flesh out, um, goals and aspirations and duties for a youth council with the same attention to detail?
I believe so. I believe not only did they, um, create a presentation around the idea of it, but I also believe they also created an actual outlined ordinance, um, idea of the creation of a youth council, and that's something that I would be more than happy to share.
We'd love to see that. Absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to make, first off, thank you very much. Um, it's amazing how much this has grown in the last few years. But what's really exciting is to go back to my first year or two on council where we were trying to do a Youth at City Hall program. Um, and a lot of folks that are now retired or not with the city essentially told me that, you know, we've tried that, it didn't work, and we're not really interested in doing it again. Um, and I just want, really want to commend our city manager and all of the staff that took the time to mentor or loco or, you know, manage one of these interns. Because it takes time, and it's work, and it's time out of your day to help these kids learn, um, you know, how to work here and what you do. Um, a, and again, when I started here, I got a lot of pushback trying to suggest that we would do this. Um, and to go and look now at the kind of leadership opportunities that some of our rank-and-file and entry-level employees get to have in interacting with these folks and our senior management, too. Um, but it is really great to see the effort that our, our team here is putting into this program. And, and I think the, the teens are benefiting from it, too, but I think our employees are, too. So it's really great. So thank you, everybody, for your efforts and yours, too.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys already know you do amazing work, and the hardest work is trying to teach our youth, even though they're, and, and, and I just say that i, if the willingness of you to sit there actually after two years and still be here means that you're doing a great job. So thank you so much for taking care of the youth of Rancho.
Thank you.
And, um, like I said Friday, the, uh, this program helps develop leaders. And we need to make sure we have the leaders for tomorrow. And I think that's who we have right here in front of us tonight. Thank you for everything you do, and, uh, you don't have to worry about being nervous. You're in good shape. So, but again, everyone, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, our next, um, presentation, calling the Community Engagement Analyst, Loriann Olm.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Loriann Olm, and I'm with the Communications and Public Affairs Department. Um, I'm actually very proud tonight that I have a chance to update you all on our successful, uh, rebuild day that we had April, um, of this year, 2019. Um, the purpose for tonight's meeting, uh, is just to update and, um, see if you have any questions. Um, I was very fortunate to be the project manager and partner, uh, with Rebuilding Together Sacramento. Um, they're absolutely amazing to work with. Um, this was a community enhancement fund project. Um, the purpose, uh, for this project was improving the health and safety and curb appeal for our low-income families, um, who needed assistance. And we're going to hear a little bit tonight about, um, we're going to hear some data from, uh, who I will introduce in a moment, Carrie Grip, the Director of Rebuilding Together Sacramento. And then we will also have a, um, a wonderful video that will be able to show you some details of the day. Um, I'd also like to thank, uh, Donald for connecting me with Rebuilding Together Sacramento, um, which has made my life and, uh, very easy and, uh, has just been an amazing, amazing partnership. They have done, um, such great things in Rancho Cordova, and we've been working with them now since 2014, uh, and, and it's just been amazing. So at this time, I do want to introduce Carrie Grip, uh, the Director of the, um, Rebuilding Together Sacramento location here and to provide a little bit more detail on the day, and then we'll introduce the video.
Thank you, Loriann. I'd like to thank Mayor McGarvey and the C, City Council members for the relationship we've had with Rancho Cordova over the last six years, more than that, actually. It's been wonderful, and I know I don't need to tell you this, but you have wonderful city staff, and you have wonderful council members that have been so supportive. And that's one reason why we love working here and we keep coming back. So thank you for that. Um, as Loriann mentioned, we've been in, um, working in the city through the commute, with the community enhancement funds. We've completed sixty-one homes over the last five years with those funds. And that's a lot of work that's been done in the community for low-income homeowners. Since, about ten years now, since we were tracking it, we've actually been in about two-hundred-and-sixty-five homes in the city to provide some level of services. So that may be the extensive services we provide through the community enhancement funds, but we also have other funders and other relationships and some CDBG grant funding to support those other homes. So there has been a lot of work done in the city. So for the rebuild event that we just had, we received sixty applications for that project, and we previewed every home. We were in every home that applied. And as Loriann mentioned, our focus is on health, safety, efficiency, and curb appeal. And just some interesting facts for you. We had four-hundred-and-fifty volunteers out there that day. We applied a hundred-and-thirty gallons of paint. We removed debris and trash using twenty-seven of the very, very large dumpsters. We repaired three roofs. We installed GFIs in fourteen of the homes. And the list goes on and on, and I won't read it all, but there are amazing things that have been done. And we also did landscaping and yard improvements at eleven of the homes. And you'll see a example of that in the next, uh, video. We were also able to leverage services in town with things that we cannot do personally, but we can leverage what is available. For example, we had S-MUD come out and they conducted assessments, weatherization assessments of every home. And then they also provided some, uh, weatherization measures to improve the efficiency. We, Republic Services has been a, a wonderful partner who we met through, uh, Loriann and through the city. Um, the Regional Water Authority donated water, low-flow toilets that we were able to install. Grid Alternatives assessed every home for possible solar. So the list does go on and on. But I'd like to thank you all for what we've done in the community. We're looking forward to next year.
My name is Veronica Johnson, and I grew up in this home, and I'm back now. And now that my mom is getting older, her mobility is compromised. And so we've been having to deal with those issues.
My name is Lomente Salvi, and I've been living here for fifty-six years. I want to keep it in good condition for my daughter for when I go, because I have heart failure. It's hard for me to do a lot of things because I get tired so quickly.
When they were here and I saw the volunteers, I just choked up and I was just so grateful. It was overwhelming.
I was shocked to see so many people, and they were so nice. They were very respectful and kind, and they looked around and tried to see what else they could do for us. It was wonderful. It was like Christmas.
They replaced the whole front yard. They took out all the grass, put shredded bark plants, drip lines throughout. They took out two huge chain-link fences and put wood gates. They redid GFI circuits in the kitchens and bathrooms. They changed over kitchen lighting to LED lighting. And they rewired the garage and then put motion lights out in the front.
It made me feel very, very secure now, like the garage with the lighting, the way it was. It was on an old extension cord, dangerous, and I feel unprotected.
I feel that since they've upgraded the house, it truly upgrades the neighborhood. My mom and I really appreciate everyone that was part of this project, Rebuilding Together Sacramento and the city of Rancho Cordova. This is our community, and we thank you.
Thank you, council. If you have any questions, I just, we'd be happy to answer. But these stories go on and on, and it was heartwarming to meet all of the residents and get to know them over the process of this. Um, they're allowing people in their home. There's hundreds of volunteers at their home. It's, um, it's a lot for the residents to take on. One of the things is they never believe it's true, so they're super grateful at the end, and, um, we're happy to do it. If you have any questions or comments.
No, I just, you had said something about that, that Carrie saves you a lot of work, and I just wanted to remind folks that we, we sat in here, again, in one of my, one of my early council meetings here, and Loriann had worked with VSP to do something like this at someone's house. And Loriann ordered all the wood and all the paint and all the pa, and all the painting materials and a bunch of grass and everything. And, you know, thirty of them went out there and did it, and she probably put in fifty hours of pre-work doing that. And I remember we were giving them the, the resolution, thanking them and thanking Loriann for all of her work. And David, who's not here today, who starts pounding his fist and goes, there ought to be a nonprofit that does this. There should be somebody out there that can help us do this. And I go, funny enough, I know someone that does. Um, and, and, and what's great about it, we've also worked with Sierra Service Project. Um, we're, we're funding Habitat again this year. And what's been really interesting about my conversations with Habitat was they never applied for Measure H funds because they thought that Rebuilding Together was covering everything that we needed to do, which is not possible. Um, but you still do fantastic work, and, and it's an honor and a privilege to get to work with, with you in the, in the city. Um, but it, it's really attracted that some of those other partners that go, wow, like, they're spending money on this kind of stuff. So thank you again, Loriann and Carrie, for everything that you've been doing for us. It's been a great partnership for the last few years, and we're really thrilled to, to continue to get to work with you.
Thank you for the introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everything you're doing for all of the citizens, who I really appreciate what you've done for them. Next, then call on Community Development Director Elizabeth Sparkman to introduce new employees.
Yes, good evening, council members. Um, my name is Elizabeth Sparkman, Community Development Director, and I oversee three divisions of planning, building, and code enforcement. And so tonight I want to tell you about four staff transitions. So, uh, these aren't new faces to you, but there have been some key transitions. So the first one I want to bring up here is Russ DuCharme. So, come on up, Russ. Um, so, you know, we've had some changes in Neighborhood Services, and we're lucky that we had in-house talent. And I'm pleased to announce that Russ has been promoted to the Neighborhood Services Manager. And I think we're fortunate because Russ brings very strong leadership skills, new ideas, a lot of energy, and I'm looking forward to working with Russ on some new initiatives.
So thank you, Elizabeth, and good evening, Mayor McGarvey and City Council. I'm honored and humbled to be promoted to the Manager of Neighborhood Services, and I acknowledge all the groundwork that has been laid out before me to make this division so successful. I started working in Neighborhood Services four years ago as a code enforcement officer and then promoted to Senior Code Enforcement Officer approximately two years ago. Previously, I was a building official and building inspector in the state of Massachusetts for four years. And prior to that, I was an owner-operator or general contracting company for fifteen years. One profound aspect of Neighborhood Services that struck me earlier in my career is the support that the community has for this division. I truly respect that. We have forged strong relationships with building, planning, public works, our police department, city attorney, and community prosecutor. And I feel like we're starting to fire on all cylinders. And I look forward to the challenges that lie ahead in serving this great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. So the next two people I want to bring up, and I'm going to bring them up as a pair, and that's Nick Sosa and Kelly Whitman in the Planning Department. You have seen Nick here plenty of times. Kelly has been behind the scenes, and they've both been here at the city for a while. So I want them to tell you a little bit about themselves and a little bit about what they do.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, council members and staff. I've been with the city of Rancho, or Nick Sosa, Associate Planner. I've been with the city of Rancho Cordova for six years now. I started as an intern in twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen. And then I was a, uh, I was hired by PMC, which then became Michael Baker, but I was still a contract employee with the city. And since day one, I've always been treated like family with staff, and I really appreciate that. And it's, uh, I'm excited to finally become, uh, part of the team, and I look forward to serving the community and alongside my, alongside my fellow team members, so.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, council members and staff. Um, my name is Kelly Whitman. I've been, um, in the Planning Division since two thousand and twelve. I started as administrative assistant and have since worked my way up as the planning tech, um, as a contract employee with PMC, which then, um, turned into Michael Baker International. Um, I've enjoyed every minute here, learned, um, so much about this community and local government and, um, how it runs and all the kind of, um, things that happen behind the scenes that most people don't understand or know about. Um, and I am just humbled to have this opportunity to continue my career with the city as a, uh, city employee, um, and looking forward to continuing to serve our community. Thank you.
Yeah, and we're really excited to have Nick and Kelly as part of the team. So we know they're going to be here for a long time, which was what we needed. Um, and so now I want to bring up probably a new face to you, Erin Naderi. She's in Building and Safety, and she came on as a student intern. And, you know, with the transition to the new permit system with Anorgov, which is a heavy lift for building and safety, um, and we've been putting Erin to the test. And so now I'm pleased to announce that we are bringing her on limited term for a few years as we transition into the new system. She is functioning as a permit tech, right? And, and she's taking some of, she's taken a lot of weight off of Wyatt and Steve so that they can focus on the Anorgov transition. So Erin, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hi, uh, Erin Naderi, and I, as like Elizabeth said, I started here as an intern, and I fell in love immediately. Um, I'm, kind of have a soft spot for Rancho Cordova because without the city, I would not exist. My parents actually met here. Um, I, so that's kind of helpful. Um, I actually grew up in the Sun River area, went to Mitchell Middle School, um, met my husband at Mitchell Middle School, uh, got married later on, not in middle school. But, um, so I currently live in the Anatolia area. So Rancho Cordova is my home. So not only is it, you know, it, it's got a really special soft spot in my heart, and I've always wanted to serve, and having that opportunity to do that now in my hometown, it's amazing. So I want to say thank you to everybody and Elizabeth as well, because I love this department also. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And what I have to say about Erin is that she's fantastic working with customers. I, she sits outside of my office, and I hear her on the phone, and she just is, um, really pleasant to the customers. And I look forward to, when they have the, uh, face-to-face contact at the counter, they're really going to enjoy working with her. Thank you.
All right, my turn. So we have someone turning thirty-five today on August tenth. Willie Rar McGary is a, a blessed piece of our city. He's the father of our city. One of the main reasons we're here as a city is because of him. And today, or August tenth, will be his birthday, so we're all going to sing him happy birthday. I've been tasked with singing. Donald, get on the mic, because then you have to sing, too. You can't just mouth the words like last time. All right, here we go. Everybody ready? All right, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rar McGary. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you for leading the wonderful singing there. Appreciate that. I guess that's it for the evening. Well, not quite, actually. Well, thank you. Um, birthdays are always nice. I mean, it's a lot better than the choice, you know? Public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor on the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any cards?
I have six speaker cards. The first speaker is Sharon Judy. Following Sharon will be Shelley Shelgren. And following Shelley will be Larry Ladd. If you could also introduce yourself and then limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. I'm Sharon Judy. Welcome to the meeting.
Welcome to you.
After watching the news last week from New York, sorry, I was just really shocked and disgusted. And knowing a couple of the officers on our RCPD, I'm thinking, maybe we should show our appreciation somehow. And I did call David and mention it to him. And being as we do banners here at Rancho Cordova, why couldn't we do a banner on City Hall thanking and showing appreciation for our RCPD? And, oh, reminding everybody of Officer Mark Stajak. Bless his heart, he is my guardian angel. I went to Idaho last month. We were coming back into Salem, Salem? Yeah. Ten miles from our destination, a boob in a pickup truck almost hit us. I was carrying cargo, and I was carrying passengers. And it seems like the grace of God and grace of Mark, we didn't get hit, and we were all safe. So, thank him, and thank you.
Thank you for bringing up his name. He is quite an honored man.
I haven't forgotten him.
Next, next speaker is Shelley Shelgren.
Hello. I'm Shelley Shelgren, and I live in Rancho for, oh geez, I guess it's been sixteen years now. My topic is regarding RVs parked in residential areas. I would like to address the parking of RVs on residential streets for days and weeks at a time. I understand the need to have time to load and unload these vehicles for or from trips. However, to leave them parked for weeks is a nuisance. They interfere with residential parking spaces for neighbors, block bike lanes, hinder people walking on sidewalks, some extend over the sidewalk, so one has to walk around or walk on lawns to pass, especially when the vehicle's extension section is out. When parked in cul-de-sacs, these issues are made worse as parking is very limited in the first place. It used to be a law in Rancho Cordova that vehicles couldn't be parked on streets over three days without moving. Is this still true? And if so, there should be a clause to this rule or law that of the three days, so the workaround of the vehicle, they move it four feet, leave it there for another three days, then move it back, and the routine goes on and on. In my neighborhood, there's an RV bus that is parked in a cul-de-sac for weeks at a time. This is like having a Greyhound bus or a semi parked in our neighborhood. Not only does this thing take up at least three needed parking spaces for other neighbors, for guests visiting, or workers, but it's an eyesore, and it's parked the wrong direction. When neighbors are having work done at their homes, they have to ask the owner to move the bus. In doing so, they move the RV to the other side of the cul-de-sac, so it's parked in front of their house the wrong way. In doing that, the rear end sticks out for uncoming traffic to go into the cul-de-sac. Even the garbage truck drivers have asked them to move the bus on pickup days, as it's difficult for them to maneuver in and out of the cul-de-sac to pick up the cans. No more three-point turns for them, as there's no room. They have to slowly and carefully back out so as not to hit the RV, making their job more difficult. If someone owns an RV, they should have a space to park them, not on residential streets. I feel the city ought to set a ruling or law regarding the parking of RVs on residential streets for extended periods of time. RVs are way too big to be parked on our narrow residential streets.
Ma'am, what was your name?
Shelley Shelgren.
One of our deputy chiefs is in the back there. Everything you just described is illegal. You can't park it the wrong way. You can't park it to where it's blocking parts of the street. And you can't just move it ten feet, and, and you've now reset the clock.
And these have been addressed with the Parking Department, and they've done what they can, but the, the people still do
Yeah.
what they're doing.
Then we should be talking more about what the enforcement is. But every, everything that you just talked about is illegal. So, I would, I would chat with the
Legal or is illegal?
Illegal.
Thank you.
So, everything you just asked us to make a law is already, as far as I understand. But I would check with our, our Assistant Chief back there and see if there isn't something else from an enforcement standpoint.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
The guy with the gun. All right, and code, yes.
Hi, guys. Larry Ladd, one of the proud founding fathers of the city of Rancho Cordova, with another update on the politics and science of what's in the groundwater beneath the Aerojet. And there are three points for three minutes. The first is perchlorate. There's no debate, no debate's going to happen until after the election. Number two, causes that I learned about in the Midwest have now appeared in ripon. The Democrats have one thing they tell you to be afraid of, and the Republicans have something else they tell you to be afraid of, and they've both happened in ripon. So, I'm going to be following what's going on down there. And then the third thing is Cyrus. An Egyptian woman just did some research in Britain that gave me my last jigsaw puzzle piece for what kind of cancer could be theoretically caused by liquid rocket fuel. And so, please tell Delia that. And so, those, so now to, for the details. Perchlorate, there's no going to be any legal challenge to our remediation system when the governor of the state is even trying to keep the president off the ballot. So, they're, if they're doing that, they're not going to be any debate until after the election about how much perchlorate should be in Rancho Cordova's drinking water. And the testing place for that in Bridgewater, Maine, little village of five hundred, where a kid got sick in, in the way I'm concerned. I'm not going there because last week, the Maine Highway Patrol arrested four Mexicans crossing the border from New Brunswick. So, in that kind of country, everybody's got their guns out now, and I'm not wandering around. So, nothing about perchlorate for the next two years, till after the election's over with. Ripon. That in the Midwest, I learned first from my niece, the farm wife, whose husband is a salesman for Monsanto, that she was scared to death that Wi-Fi was giving her children cancer, and that evil people in Silicon Valley were, had the power to make this all secret. And so, I tried to talk her about it. And on, on the Democratic side, Mr. Terry, in the Midwest, because they want to ban TCE, that there's a big phobia now going about, or they're promoting a phobia, CNN is, about TCE in sewers. And the spotlight is on Franklin, Indiana, which is twenty miles from the vice president's hometown. So, they're both very politically charged, and they both happened in ripon. A woman with an embryonal tumor, child embryonal tumor in, and I gave you guys a handout to show the whole variety of them, through media pressure, removed a cell phone tower from the school site. And then, if, for those of you old enough to remember the O.J. Simpson trial, Johnny Cochran, who has passed away, his law firm has convinced her now that there's TCE in the sewers, and they're asking the Water Board to test for that. So, I'm going to couple up with the guy at the Central Valley Water Board here in Rancho Cordova, comes to his vacation on the twelfth, and check out his methodology. The last thing
Please wrap up your comments.
All right. The last thing, you know, I can tell you every form of cancer, the subtype that you could associate with liquid rocket fuel. And that's mostly for Folsom, not here, because it's not happening here. But the, the, the form of ovarian cancer is, has a gene, and I'll talk to David about that, that's involved with kind of viruses he studies. So, I'll talk to David about that in private. So, but the science is progressing, but as usual in this country, the politics are deteriorating.
Thanks, Larry.
Yep.
Next speaker is Mita Koshat. Following Mita will be Darrell Langwell, and following Darrell will be Maureen Nelson.
Greetings.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Well, the secret is out. There are two Rancho Cordovans, Cordovas. There is the south side, which is wonderful and new and affluent and has everything perfect. And then, according to the sacrament, there's the south, the north side, which is neglected in desperation of needing help. And I think today, I'm here to say, we have a good neighbor guide. And there's ten points in it, which has been on the books for quite a while. It has been lukewarmly enforced. And they were talking about RVs on the street. We've talked about garbage cans. We've talked about debris. We've talked about errant residents. And it seems like the reaction from all of these things, which could be taken care of easily, has met with lukewarm enforcement. And I think it's time that the city council and the staff attack these things with vigor. For example, in, in our area on the north side, the poor side, every resident has a gate. And why these garbage cans cannot put, be, be put behind a gate defies logic. And so, instead of saying, if you have a gate, you open it, you put your garbage cans back, it got this, well, if you, if you build some sort of a retaining thing in front of the garbage cans, that'll be okay. That is not okay. And those things are an eyesore as bad, an eyesore as bad as the garbage cans. And I think we should start enforcing maybe the first two or three codes in violations very vigorously. And then, we can go on to other things, hard things, like what about the RVs and the blue tarps and the boats? Why can't we come to some sort of a resolution on that? And if neighbors and residents don't want to follow the rules, they should be, there should be a stiff, a stiff penalty. And I'm talking about maybe a hundred dollars for the first offense. And then, if they don't comply, bring a bigger hammer. We have, we have managed these codes with sort of waving a feather.
Your time is up. Please wrap up your comments.
I'm for bringing on a hammer. Let's start with a claw hammer. And if that doesn't work, bring on a sledgehammer. But we have got to turn around this decline in the north side of the, of the city. Thank you.
Darrell Langwell from the Vineyards neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for letting me speak. I've talked a couple of times about the difficulty in navigating the Rancho Cordova website. I've been dealing with a coastal county, and their website is even more difficult than Rancho Cordova's. And when I finally get where I think I need to be, there's no information there. The Rancho Cordova website, when I get to where I want to be, there is information there, and I appreciate that. Also, I've emailed a department down there, and it took about four days for me to get a response to my email. Here in Rancho Cordova, I don't think I've ever waited more than twenty-four hours, working, one working day, to get a response, and I certainly appreciate that from our city staff. After looking at some of the other places, we could still kind of make the website a little easier to navigate, but by golly, when you find it, the information is there, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Maureen Nelson. Following Maureen will be Greg Ball.
Mayor McGarvey and councilmen and Cyrus. My name is Maureen Nelson. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six. This is the third time I've wanted to come before the city council. The first time, I couldn't get the nerve up like Alex. The second time was last month, and you were all celebrating the American, All-American City Award, and I just couldn't rain on your parade. So, today, my complaint seems minor compared to the tragedies in Ohio, Texas, but I still wanted to say something. I agree with Mita. I have pictures that I want to show you. I have the main problem around here. One of them is trash on the street. This pile was on Zimpano for weeks, and we all called in about it, and it just never got picked up. And I think it's because Republic is so overwhelmed with people putting out piles whenever they want, not close to their garbage day. So, then that's changed. And I know they've put in a new system, but I wanted to say this before their new system came out. So, that's why I'm complaining about it. So, this was on Zimpano, which I got to pass like every other day. My other complaint is the weeds. This is in my neighborhood, and there's two houses, a duplex. It's a pit, and I don't know who owns the place, but I think that code has to do something about it. And I have to be honest, I haven't called about that because I've been, so many other things going on, but that's just one place in my neighborhood. The next picture, that's another, that's the side of the duplex. But there, there's other stuff. I had a pile on my street. The man moved, and so he called, and the person that he got to help him, they put it on my, the cul-de-sac instead of in front of the house. So, I called Republic. They picked it up, but they didn't pick up the pile on the cul-de-sac. And it was a horrible, ugly pile that, I mean, I was going crazy. There were palm fronds, there was a mirror, there was a mattress, and my daughter was getting married in like three weeks. And the week before the wedding, I flagged down my garbage man and said, "Can you please help me with this pile? I'm a nervous wreck about it." So, he called the office, and he got the pile removed that day. But I had been waiting weeks to have it moved. Another problem is that there's weeds up on Zimpano, on the corner of Zimpano and Vehicle Drive. I called about six weeks ago, and they were removed this weekend. But when it's like that, and it's on private property, after a while, I know you can't do stuff with private property, but, you know, I don't know why you couldn't like mow the weeds and give them the bill. So, that's my complaint about. It's just there's a lot of stuff in this area, and I agree with Mita. I didn't know she was going to come up here tonight, but there's just stuff that it's all over, and I just, I hope that you see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, basically everybody up there and everybody in this room. My name is Greg Ball. I live in the Vineyards. And what I want to talk about tonight is, by way of sharing a story, that something that happened last week. Specifically, I want to talk about Republic Services that picks up our trash. And I think the issue I have with them, and we have talked to Republic, they have attended our VENS meetings, and it's always, well, you know, the company wants to be more efficient and this and that. Yeah, I know, I, I worked for a corporation for thirty-two years. That's the name of everybody's business, getting more efficient. Well, anyway, what I'm talking about is that basket that sits on the front of the garbage truck, that they load with our recycles, and then every so often, dump it into the back of the truck. back of the truck, needs to be addressed. And I don't care who does it or how you do it. I hope I can create the, the will here to, to go forward to them. But, but as I say, we have made them a bit aware of this. So last week, I was out running some errands, and I came home. And I was home for a few minutes, a little bit, not very long. And along came the Republic truck, and it picked up my recycles. And as it did, it started to drive away, and, you know, the basket goes up. And so out of my recycles, you know, this, which was mine, bounces off the back of the truck and down the side of the truck. And the driver, he's most probably looked in the mirror for clearance, but they don't see this, and it doesn't matter if they come back the other way, they don't pick it up. So this was purchased at Safeway, brought home, contents consumed, put in my recycled can like a good little citizen, out on the street early, picked up and left in my front yard. So I went out and got it, obviously, because I thought, since this is last Tuesday, Wednesday, perhaps you guys would be interested. So as I said, I'd come home from running errands. So I left then, and I headed up the street, which I had just driven through 20 minutes, 30 minutes earlier before the garbage truck came by. And when I got up at Barbera and Chisela, right in the center of the intersection, is a Fram oil filter. And it's in this bag there in plain sight. So I, as I drove past and looked at it, that, that got me, because I just had picked this up, and then I see that. So I went ahead and pulled, pulled my car around and got out to take a picture. It was kind of humorous at that moment, as I'm standing in the intersection taking a picture, two of your code enforcement people pulled up in a car and asked me what's going on. And I said, just taking a picture of the evidence here of Republic's job, so I can go ahead, I think I'll go to the council and let them, let them know what's, what's going on. So in the meantime, I also, by the way, picked up a lot of other miscellaneous things that were both in front of my house and down around this.
Your time is up. Please wrap up your comments.
Yeah. So my point to you is this, I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know or haven't heard. What I am, what I am trying to do is, there's enough blight in our city to begin with, and I believe that you're all as concerned about it as the rest of us are. But this is an example of something that can be addressed with that company. You hold the contract, and you don't, I understand you don't tell them how they operate, and they may have even brought this in in between, tween contracts. But this needs to be addressed, and they need to find a way. It is, this to me is a fixable thing. They need to do a way, if they want to do quality looks, maybe they need see-through baskets. But they need a way of conveying that stuff directly into their trash truck and not leaving it all over our streets. So I thank you for your attention, and probably there'll be more to come on this one. So have a good evening.
Thank you.
I have no other public comment cards.
Anyone else in the audience that didn't turn the card that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Tara Colvin-Bach. I'm with the Whisker Warriors in Rancho Cordova. And Mayor and council members, I just want to say that I was very thrilled that the youth, the pro-youth and families helped us. They made 39 beds for us at, on a Monday, and they got to see the two kittens that were born here at City Hall. And they were so thrilled, and we were thrilled. They were so happy. And we were happy because now all the kitties that we trap have something soft to lay on. So I just want to say thank you. I think that program is wonderful. The kids were excellent. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Then go on to council reports. Donald Terry.
Well, I went on a trip to Costa Rica. Did not get to our sister city, unfortunately, but it was my 10th anniversary, so we spent a little bit more time in spas and beaches than over there. But I did just want to thank the community council for another great Fourth of July. We actually didn't go to Fourth of July. We did the parade, but we did July 3rd, and it was a great show. Everyone had a great time. And so congrats to everybody that was involved with that. It was fantastic. It was a little tough to get up on July 5th and go to the airport, though. And then it's been two years since Dr. Ayala was hired as the executive director or the Air Pollution Control Officer for the Air District. He got another glowing review from, from the district, and we're now entering into negotiations to extend his contract. So hopefully, we'll be working with him for a while longer. And then finally, I think I've shared with a lot of you that I, I serve on the Children's Museum Board. I think all of you spoke to Cyrus earlier this month about reallocating some of the funding that we had for Measure H to assist with some planning and operational costs that they're having right now. So, but the process is moving forward as far as space planning and visioning for, for that new space and the existing space, and even the space outside and around the museum, and how that could be better utilized. So thank you, Cyrus, to you and the rest of council for supporting that additional funding or reauthorization of funding. It is greatly needed and will be used wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
So as I said, I was really pleased to be asked to present the history of Rancho Cordova to the kids in their summer at City Hall program. I always thoroughly enjoy that. And so then going to their graduation on Friday night was absolutely thrilling. I know that sounds kind of funny, but they truly put together the most intricate explanation of what they had found and what they thought we should do in terms of an arts and public places program. And complete with the criteria, complete with, and it's all data-driven, complete with what the Arts Commission should be. They even designed a potential commission logo. And then listening to the kids, more of the kids than were able to come tonight, talk about what they had been getting out of this program. It really did exactly what Bob said. It's creating leaders, it's creating people who know more about their city than ever before, and it's creating people who want to be participants, which means they want to stay here and live here in Rancho Cordova to help stop the brain drain of people who've gone through our school system and then may go to some other city to live. So it's, we couldn't be asked, we couldn't ask for, for better results from this program, that's for sure. Attended the first performances of the Cordova Accelerated Performing Arts, doing a Midsummer Night's Dream over at the Performing Arts Center. It was very funny. The kids were funny, and everybody had a good time. They just need to increase their attendance, and everybody is really working on how in the world they, they go about doing that. It was my pleasure to participate in an event over at Burning Barrel Brewery, where they presented an organization called Patriots Honor with a check for over $3,000 that they had raised from selling T-shirts. Patriots Honor was founded a few years ago by people, both who are on active duty as well as people who have retired. And they specifically have a goal of being military, helping the military. And, and it was just a, it was a wonderful group of people. Talked to a young staff sergeant, a young lady staff sergeant who is on duty at Travis, and just met some of the most delightful committed Americans. It was very gratifying. If you haven't noticed, we have a new art exhibit in City Hall. This is the largest one yet, and it represents about four dozen different art exhibitions, each with a different theme, that had been on display ever since the, the organization was started. This one, I think, is called Reflections. And you, and if each one of them has an explanation of what it is they're reflecting. So be sure to take some time to go look at and see what they, what they're, what they're displaying. And then this morning was the quarterly meeting of the SPTC JPA, which is the Sacramento-Plasserville Transportation Carder JPA. And this was a very uneventful meeting. They are continuing to work on establishing a trails project, along with excursion rail from the city of Folsom all the way up into, up to Placerville. And one of the retired Eldorado County staff people today suggested that it ought to be a park. One of, it would be a very long regional park, and there are, would be tremendous opportunities available if that were to happen. So, so I just plan to talk to a few people like Travel and Tourism about it and see what everybody thinks. They need to, they need to organize their thoughts better, but, but it just seems like an idea worth pursuing. So, thank you.
Very good. You're it.
So I went to National League of Cities out in Mississippi and learned a lot of things about, that, that we can do as a city to bring more jobs and, and other things to help out the city. Rancho Cordova Business Group meeting was good. We talked about stuff that's going on. They're very excited about the growth and even better about the security that's going to be in, hopefully attract more people to the north side of Rancho, so that business can get done better there. I was happy to represent the city and hand out helmets with Donald for people at the Fourth of July parade, and then, of course, to be in the parade. We went to the Uganda Mission. They had something at the city hall that was awesome. Mercy Peddlers is now trying to come into Rancho Cordova. These are a group of nuns that peddle through the city, trying to help out the homeless. Great people, yeah. St. John Vianys, there's some exciting news, but I'll hold off on saying that until I get it more nailed down, but there's lots of good things that are going on there. Had a Rancho Cordova breakfast. It's great to see all the new businesses. I think we literally add 10 to 15 every month into our city, which is amazing. I went to a library authority meeting, so this is pretty exciting. I wrote this down, and I was looking up his name. His name is Neil Geismann, is coming to Rancho Cordova. He's the guy that wrote Good Omens, Stardust, Beowulf, and Caroline. So he's actually going to do a speech in our city at our library. So I don't know if you guys would be excited about that, but it's a big series, it's on Amazon right now, and everyone should go, because there's not a lot of chances to see a speaker of this quality. And somehow, the library authority was able to snatch him, and even better, they were able to make him come to Rancho. So, awesome. Met with the Interfaith Council. They're doing a lot of good things in the city, more to come on that. And lastly, I haven't done much, so obviously you can tell. So last thing we want to see is, we have a big meeting for the Chamber, and there's some new businesses that are coming through. And welcome to the newest restaurant in Rancho, which is the Sushi Spot, or the Ohana Hawaiian Restaurant. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. I wanted to thank Ken Thurman and the other representatives from the Purple Heart, and recognize the city Rancho Cordova as a Purple Heart city. A lot of the things you talked about were something that we've seen, but sometimes you kind of forget about, all the things that we've been doing, continue to do for the veterans in Rancho Cordova. I wanted, had a good time with everyone else on the Fourth of July. The fireworks was great, the parade was fun, it was all that sort of thing. But it was one of those things that I think people really just really enjoy every year on the Fourth of July. Let's see. I had some, my family visiting, my brother and his wife, and my daughter and her husband from, brother from Indiana and my daughter from Florida in July. It was just nice having family here. It doesn't happen sometimes. Let's see. We took them to the Railroad Museum. My brother is very enthusiastic about railroads. He has a small one in his basement, it's a full thing. It's really a lot of fun, but he couldn't imagine the size of some of the engines there, about four times taller than he was. And I'm going to have the Mayor Walk again this year. We're going to have August 17th is AM Win, August 31st is River View Stem Academy, September 14th is Cordova Villa, September the 28th is Rancho Cordova Elementary, then October the 12th will be the Robert J. Mangrabi Elementary. And I have to say again, thank you to Donald Terry for putting my name in there. That's still astounding to have.
I honor.
Your name on something like that.
I'm going on that walk with you.
Good, I hope so, yes, definitely. Well, it's not far from your home, so you don't have to walk too far. I mean, you know. In addition to the sunglasses that we give to kids in the beads and all that sort of thing, I'm also going to have, have one more thing there with, for people to pick up if they want. I'm going to have gloves, and I'm going to have bags for them to carry with them as they go along the walk. And if you see some trash, you can pick it up and put it in the bag. And maybe by the time the walk is done, you will have a much cleaner and much happier neighborhood. But that's one more thing that we're going to be doing. But again, we have the ones that will start on Saturday the 17th. So I'm looking forward to having those and hoping everyone can come. That's going to be something to teach people what's in their neighborhood, because most of them don't know that. We walk about a mile, mile and a quarter, something like that. You can see so much more of a neighborhood by walking through it rather than driving a car through it. So, thank you, and that's what I've got. Go on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items that I wanted to share. First of all, in the aftermath of the Camp Fire in Paradise last year, a number of public agencies throughout the state stepped in to help and assist, including our city as part of our mutual aid. Our police department was involved, a number of city staff members were involved. And in recognition of that effort and the work the city has, staff has, have done, we received a recognition from the Board of Supervisors from Beale County honoring the city and our, the assistance that we provided. So I have that available. I'm, fortunately, you know, this, wish we could have assisted in, under different circumstances, but when a tragedy strikes, we all have to step in and assist. On two other notes, thank you, council, for acknowledging the youth at the city hall. I wanted to remind you, and I think, and thank you for acknowledging the work of staff behind every successful program and project, there's a great deal of good work that happens with, by, by many people. We had a number of students participate. This program has grown, and we had students participate in every single division department in the city hall. And, and it, our city staff took the time to provide the guidance, the training, and that the youth needed, and obviously, you see the results and the fruits of their presentation tonight. And lastly, I also wanted to point out that our Mater Heritage Trail received an award from the American Public Works Association, and the award was presented to Albert and his team this last Friday. So congratulations for a great project and a work well done. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, I'm 13. Consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Does anyone wish to have a, an item pulled?
Seeing none, I will move approval of the consent calen, calendar items 13.1, 1.2, and 1.3.
Second.
Motion, a second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent, and Mayor McGarvey.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item of individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. And since this is a public hearing item, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if we have anyone who has cards on this.
I do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Anyone in the audience wishes to speak about this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the council wishes to pull any, that one item.
I will move that we adopt the resolution that would approve the facade renovations for the hotel behind us. Item 14.1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent and Mayor McGarvey.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, on to item 15, Public Hearing Items, and ask our city clerk to announce the subject.
The subject of 15.1, An Ordinance Adding Chapter 9.84, Personal Property Storage on Public Property to Title IX of the Ranch of Cordova Municipal Code, Public, Peace, Morals, and Safety.
Okay. Have our staff or report, please.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and Councilmembers. My name is Rustu Sharma. I am the manager of Neighborhood Services. I'm here to speak to you regarding proposed ordinance 9.84 titled Public Property Storage. The city is responsible for maintaining streets, sidewalks, and other public areas owned, maintained, or managed by the city. And currently, we use several tools to ensure that these areas are maintained in a safe, sanitary, and accessible manner. The intent of this ordinance is to only address personal property stored on public land and excludes application to cars, trucks, boats, or recreation vehicles. Many jurisdictions have adopted similar ordinance as an additional tool to help with unattended property on public property. The goal of this ordinance is to ensure safe and sanitary public sidewalks, streets, and areas consistent with their intended uses. This ordinance will help support and bolster our existing tools and processes to address private property stored on public land by providing an additional level of notification to the personal property owner who is in violation of this ordinance. This ordinance will also help expedite enforcement on any illegally stored private property on public land as it gives clear notice and recourse to property owners if private property was inadvertently left on public land. Our current process allows for city and contract staff to remove personal property from public land if the property is abandoned or possesses an immediate health, life, or safety issue. If abandoned or disposed of on public land, similar to an illegal dumping situation, the property is removed and a notice is posted to the area, which states the process to follow in retrieving the impounded private property. Under this new ordinance, private property located on public land, whether clearly abandoned or not, would be posted with a pre-removal notice stating that the property is being unlawfully stored and must be removed within 24 hours of this notice, thus giving the private property owner the opportunity to reach voluntary compliance. If the personal property is not removed after 24 hours has expired, the city or contract staff will remove the property and provide a post-removal notice in the approximate location where the property is located. In conclusion, this new ordinance would provide staff with a consistent process when addressing private property stored on public property, place less field determination on evaluating if property is abandoned, and provides the property owner with adequate notification prior to removal, including an opportunity to reach voluntary compliance over a 24-hour time period. It is the city's recommendation that this council adopt this ordinance to help ensure safe, healthy, and sanitary public sidewalks, streets, and other areas by empowering the city and contract staff through clear guidelines provided in this ordinance to take action on private property stored on public land. Thank you for your time, and Elizabeth and I are available for questions or comments.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure we all want to know if this will help to alleviate some of the photographs that we've seen tonight during public comment.
Yes, it will. Absolutely. It'll provide the person who put the items out in the public to go out and put them away or take them away or bring them to the dump, whatever it may be.
So people could report this, they could report it now, but they could report this and the action would be quicker. Somebody would, we would go out, your staff would go out and
Correct.
post the 24-hour notice and then the next day check back to see whether it was still there or not.
Correct.
And it would apply to a large pile of junk.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would.
What about the two machines that are used to clean up the bulk for the garbage pickup? You can get three a year and all that sort of thing, but it seems like there are more and more people who are just doing that, dumping it someplace almost in between some two different properties or alongside a fence rather than going even to the public dump. Is this something that we'll be able to do also? Will we have something to handle that?
As long as the property is on public land, yes. If it's on private property, we already have a system, a process that we use through a notice and order. But we do have a lot of people who do not dial before they pile, which is Republic's kind of mantra with bringing their stuff out into the public right of way. And this would work there, yes.
Good. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any comments from the public on this?
I do not have any speaker cards.
We've probably heard the public on this.
I think we heard about something like it, maybe. And if there are no or speaker cards, and there aren't, then we're going to close this public hearing then and ask if there's a motion.
I will move approval of this ordinance adding this particular chapter to our municipal code.
Second.
And introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance.
Back to the second again.
Thank you. You read the public, yeah. Roll call.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent. Mayor McGarvey.
Aye. Thank you very much. We can get started on that. I think that will help in the city. Okay, item number 16, Regular Calendar Items. And our city clerk to announce a subject, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ranch of Cordova approving the Second Amendment to the First Restated Agreement for Legal Services between the City and Myers-Nave. For the record, the result of the recommended action is as follows. Adoption of this resolution will approve the Second Amendment to the First Restated Agreement for Legal Services with Myers-Nave. The amended agreement includes a 6% increase to partially account for inflation since the last rate increase and appointing two deputy city attorneys. The amended agreement shall take effect beginning with the August 2019 billing period.
Very good. Thank you. Staff report. Cyrus?
I think what our city clerk just stated is the staff report. We have, basically, this is a renewal of the contract. And the contract provides as stated by Ms. Leitner. And we have also allowed for inflation adjustments of 6% increase in the billing rates as was previously presented to the council.
So does this include an annual cost of living adjustment at this point?
Yes, the contract, the renewed contract includes the adjustment as well.
Then if there's no other comment, I will move approval of this resolution.
Second. I win.
Roll call, please.
Was it Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes, again.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry? Vice Mayor Sander is absent and Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 17, Council Request for Future Agenda Items.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I tend not to take my, I don't tend to look to bigger cities for ideas on things to work on. But we have shown to be extremely progressive when it's come to e-cigarettes and tobacco-related laws. And I think we should be taking a look at whether or not we want to ban the sale of flavored vaping and e-cigarettes. Were you about to say the same thing?
I've already had this conversation with a couple of people.
Okay. So at least explore how Sacramento did it and how other communities have been doing it in California and see if it's something that we want to add on to our ordinance, considering for the past five years or so, we've been the most progressive when it's come to enforcement of those products in Northern California. And clearly, every study recently that's been coming out is showing that a dramatic increase in youth using those products.
I got a counsel, if I may, Mr. City Manager. Counsel asked the city manager and the city attorney's office some months ago to take a look back at different categories of ordinances that had been adopted by the city in recent memory. And we took that to heart and have had a couple of initial conversations about what topics we might review. And I can actually tell you that just today, I was refining the list at the direction of the city manager to bring it back to the leadership team and had highlighted that particular topic as one of probably the final 10 topics that we would recommend as getting very serious consideration for a redo. So we're thinking along the same lines.
Well, and I know I had asked, I asked Micah, I think, right? About, because I could have sworn that we extended the distance from the entrance of a restaurant or a place of business that you have to be away from in order to smoke. And I thought it was 50 to 100 feet. And it's still, I believe, whatever the county minimum was of 25 or something. Yeah, so hopefully that's on your list of 10 because that's one of the ones I want to look at, too.
That's part of that topic.
And I had tentatively flagged it for discussion with staff also, the broader conversation about there were a number of other smoking-related changes that were, and just are those current or are those out of date or are those falling behind in time?
What might also be really helpful in this discussion is maybe working with Maria and our state lobbyist to see what other pending ideas the state already has. I'm sure there's some bill sitting out there saying that they're going to ban these flavored products anyways. Just let's make sure that we're also, you know, things that we think are really likely to pass anyways, and the governor's already said that they're going to sign, maybe we just don't need to research that nearly as much. But just to make sure that we have an understanding of the playing field at the legislature.
It sounds like the back-and-forth conversation about plastic bags that went on for 10 years and why the legislature dithered on what they were going to do.
Well, the funny thing is, right, that, you know, we were such a trendsetter when it came to the Promise Program. Well, the state essentially has made community college free for two years. So now we're figuring out how we can enhance what we're doing anyways, but it's nice to be a trendsetter.
So I would speak to Donald's item because that was the first one that I had on my list. And I got it, yeah, I got it off of a coming agenda item at the Board of Supervisors, the County Board of Supervisor. And so my question to the city manager and the police chief is that if they're going to do this in Sacramento County, should we be thinking about doing it here? So I appreciate the fact that the city attorney just had it down as a discussion item. And I understand everyone's perspective about enforcement and that kind of thing. But it seems like we could just discuss it and see what people think.
So is there, is there support for this item to be brought back by the council?
I think there's three.
You can bring it.
Okay.
Okay, so my second item. The City of Sacramento apparently has reduced the speed limit around certain selected schools to 15 miles per hour. And I particularly like this one because they do the same thing in Tucson, where my mother lives. And I realize that it is a total shock to motorists to have to drive 15 miles an hour and adjacent to a school. It's like the old school zone, except that in Tucson, they actually do it on all the major boulevards, which is unique. But during the school year and the school hours, people really do slow down to something that's modest. If not 15, they're probably 20. But I just wondered if we would like to discuss that. Obviously, we have schools that are on major, really major thoroughfares like Coloma Road, and that might not be practical, but.
We have them on rootier, too. And now that we put all that infrastructure in, that makes a lot of sense in front of Carver.
So I'm just wondering if I have colleagues who think that would be a topic for the discussion.
That was actually something when I was on the school board and we had a student hit and killed in front of a high school, that we started that conversation. So that was 11 years ago. And the city just got around to doing it. So I think it's a great idea. And I think there are a handful of spots that would make a lot of sense to do something like that.
Yeah, okay. So. So then the other one. I'm surprised Donald didn't bring this. We may have, we may have all gotten this from Breathe, California.
I did. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so they're suggesting that we should do smoke-free multi-housing. And it was discussed years ago. And I don't think we ever did anything about it.
I believe we banned indoor common area smoking. That was it.
Okay, but I'm wondering if we would like to, something called Lucha, a project of the Health Education Council. But I'd be happy to give this to staff. And you all think about whether it's something that we want to do?
Is this a potentially future council discussion?
Yeah.
We have three votes to do that?
Donald's up for that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's all part of the bigger discussion anyway. So no, I think it'd be great. I know that we had a lengthy conversation with the Rental Housing Association about this. They were all for banning indoor common area. I think we might even discussed that multifamily providers had to provide a designated smoking area outside a certain distance that's covered and something like, or at least we chatted about it. And most of the Rental Housing Agency was really in support, like their members were fine with banning smoking inside the units. I think it was a handful of our operators here that I think expressed some concern.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe there's even a compromise position. But anywhere you look at it, when you think about being a landlord of property where there has been heavy smoking and what you have to do to any particular unit, to fumigate it, to change the curtains, to paint the walls, it just seems like this would be a huge money saver. But if it doesn't go over, I mean, if it doesn't go over well, then it's worth the discussion and maybe there's a middle ground.
Yeah. I think whenever we were negotiating these or talking about these with, again, the Rental Housing Agency or is it the California Apartment Association now? Jim Lofgren's running it now. It was interesting because they really represent the good operators within this region that probably already banned smoking within units or have massive deposits that you have to put down for it. So when we're talking to them, we're talking to the good ones. And the problem is that we pass these rules and it's usually the ones that aren't engaged that, you know, they own an apartment here, but they live in, you know, a foreign country or whatever that is really running the bad stuff. So I doubt we would have a lot of pushback, but I definitely think we should add that to the list of items to consider. And if you haven't seen this report that came out with recommendations from Breathe, California, it really is impressive. And it was done in partnership with them, Valley Vision, and a handful of other folks. But I think everyone got that in their box, right? I didn't, I.
I don't know where, I, I think it came in the mail, I'm not sure where it came.
You did, yeah, so they all came, every, everyone got delivered one of those, um, they came and presented actually a de- a more detailed finding at the Air District. And then there's also, uh, a website with a very thorough report about what they found.
Well, from my perspective, it, it really, um, fits the, um, the presentation we heard tonight in the workshop about, um, uh, crime-free, uh, crime-free multifamily housing, because the end result of that is really con- becoming even more of a family-friendly community than we are already, and, um, I'm sure those of us who don't smoke have a completely different attitude than the people who do, but it seems to me, being a family-friendly community is offering clean air.
Yep.
So.
So helping the council keep focused on a scheduling conversation rather than a substantive one, we're, we're hearing a desire for a relatively fairly broad reconsideration, we look at
It's probably been four, five years since we adopted the last one, so, I mean, there, there's a lot of, I mean, the technology has really changed, I mean, I, I think the first time that we ever did it, um, and I, I brought up even having this discussion was because, um, oh, one of our restaurants had, you know, made their own sign to say, "Don't, don't, you know, vape in our, in our restaurants." You know, even though it may be legal, please don't do it, and, and I just kind of thought that was a really stupid thing that a business has to worry about. But again
Being sensitive, being sensitive to Adam's comment about, um, having a process question and not a substantive question.
No, 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 I understand, but what I, but what I wanted to get at, besides that, is as we have this revisit, and I think we've tried to do this a couple of times, not only talking about what other things we want to ban or make illegal or change the rules on, also, let's talk about how well we've enforced these in, since we adopted them, because we've had varying degrees of success with that, especially, especially the special events and smoking in parks.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Calling one, calling twice. Meeting is adjourned.